I cannot believe it. If everyone could take a seat, please, we're ready to start our meeting on Monday, May 2, 2022, here in the council chambers. Before we start, I just want to thank everybody in this room for helping me through some of the hardest days of my life with the loss of my father. And I certainly appreciate the flowers, the sentiments, and the cards and donations to Beverly Farm that many of you gave at the funeral. So just know how much I really appreciate your kindness, and it has given our whole family comfort. So once again, I want to thank you personally. But I am working on thank-you notes, just haven't got them finished yet. Okay. I will now call this meeting to order, and I'd like to explain the disaster procedures. So if there happened to be a tornado, we would definitely go to the basement. And of course, a fire or anything of that magnitude, we would go right out the doors. And being this old second-grade school teacher, I will tell you, we need to stay in a straight line. So it's more efficient. Okay. Since the meetings are being videotaped, it's important for everyone to speak into, directly into the microphone, and so everyone can hear us. I know if you watch it sometimes on the YouTube, a lot of comments are, "I can't hear them." So let's try to really concentrate on doing that this evening. So Jenny, will you do a roll call of the aldermen?
Alderman Hazel, Alderman Whitaker.
Here.
Alderwoman Duco.
Here.
Alderwoman Aris.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Ferguson.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderman Dennehyman.
Here.
Alderwoman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderwoman Steele.
Here.
Alderman Rothweiler.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Wygon.
Here.
Alderwoman Sullivan.
Here.
All are present, with the exception of Alderman Hazel.
Thank you. Department heads?
City Treasurer Beerman.
Present.
City Attorney Horner.
Present.
Police Chief Bill Clay. Fire Chief JP Penay.
Here.
Finance Director Jamie Maitre.
Here.
Director of Public Works Jason Poole.
Here.
Director of Waste Water Randy Smith.
Here.
Director of Library Leander Spearman.
Here.
Director of IT Scott Markovich.
Here.
City Engineer Sal Elcott.
Here.
Director of Health Housing and Buildings Scott Tyler.
Here.
Director of Economic Development Planning and Zoning Clifford Crofts.
Present.
Everyone's present. Police Chief Clay is excused.
Thank you very much. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No public hearing tonight. So at this time, we open for public participation. And let's remember to be very gracious and respectful. And it's two to three minutes per person. Is there anyone who would like to speak this evening? Stuart? State your name, please.
Stuart Leonard Bellville. I know this is a monumental waste of time for everybody. I was talking to some aldermen just before meeting about the crime in East Bellville. I talked to a man that I've met the other day, and he had a big knife on him. I said, "What's..." You know, he said, "Well, I've been mugged three times, basically, in my backyard." And Holmright got robbed in the middle of the day. But none of the aldermen either didn't know about it or didn't care. So anyway... That's about all I got to say, that nobody cares about Bellville. And so have a good day or evening.
Okay, thank you, Stuart. But I would like to comment that we have eight new police officers that have come in to the city of Belleville since the middle of May of last year. And we actually have even more applying for to take the Belleville test.
I asked the man that got mugged three times, I said, "Well, what about, did you hear about the thing up in North Charles where forty or fifty bullets were flying?" He said, "Yeah, I knew a guy that lived up there." Well, after the forty or fifty bullets and bullet holes all over the place, one of the perpetrators got twenty months probation, no jail time, is a felon with a gun. Twenty months probation, no jail time. They never did catch the other one.
Okay.
What are you good, what good are cops, anyway? Thank you.
Well, Stuart, I think they are heroes in our community. Anybody who puts their, their life on the line. Thank you, Stuart, for your graciousness. Okay. I need a motion to approve the appointment of Kara Ostoff to serve as Ward Eight Alderman to fill a vacancy of Roger Wiggington. Okay. Any discussion? Roll call.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Aris.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dennehyman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygon.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Okay. At this time, we will have the swearing-in of Kara Ostoff as Ward Eight Alderman. Congratulations.
I, Kara Ostoff.
Hi, Kara Ostoff.
Having been elected to the office of Alderman Ward Eight. In the city of Belleville.
In the city of Belleville.
In the county of St. Clair.
In the county of St. Clair.
And state of Illinois.
And state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Of the office of Alderman Ward Eight.
Of the office of Alderman Ward Eight.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would you like to have a picture taken real quick? Thank you very much, and welcome, Mrs. Ostoff. Thank you. Okay. I'd like to recognize the character word of the month, which is self-discipline, meaning think about your words and actions, and then making choices that are right. I'd like to also recognize that Congress designated May as the National Military Appreciation Month in 1999 to ensure the nation was given the opportunity to publicly demonstrate their appreciation for the sacrifices and successes made by our service members, past and present. So now, we have a special proclamation. This is the first week of May, and that is the week of Be Kind to Animals Week. And so we are recognizing the Belleville Area Humane Society for their outstanding animal welfare. Ryan Moore from Belleville Area Humane Society, will you please come up? I've been seeing a lot of Ryan. He was at the zoning board meeting until after 11:00 the other night. It was a long one.
So I'll come down with the proclamation, and we will read it. And Kathy, could you take a picture of Ryan accepting this? Okay. Whereas, throughout the county, or country, excuse me, Be Kind to Animals Week marks the observance of the efforts and of guidance sentiment toward protection and consideration of animals. And whereas dogs, cats, and other animals have been special companions to humans for centuries, offering the benefit of a never-ending supply of love, loyalty, friendship, and affection; and whereas community members and leaders, shelter personnel, veterinarians, animal welfare organizations, as well as schools and libraries, work together toward one common goal; and whereas the Belleville Area Humane Society leads in animal welfare in the region through improving the lives of animals through adoption, humane education, and community outreach; whereas our community will protect the rights of all animals, we call upon all people toward the kind consideration of all animals. Now therefore, I, Patty Gregory, Mayor of the city of Belleville, Illinois, do hereby applaud the commitment of the Belleville Area Humane Society for their outstanding animal welfare efforts and proudly proclaim the week of May 1st through the 7th, 2022, as Be Kind to Animal Week in the city of Belleville. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Belleville to be affixed the second day of May, 2022. And would you please accept this? Well, and if you get a chance, look at what we've developed. Kim Verone was here this morning, and we actually did a little videotape about Be Kind to Animal Week. And then, you know, when I came in, we started doing things for people's birthdays. And so this morning, I personally and my first dog, Belleville's Frasier Gregory, we presented a $500 check in honor of all the employees' birthdays for the city of Belleville. So congratulations on the great work that you were doing at the Belleville Humane Society. We so appreciate it. Take care.
We call those Bow Wow birthdays. Okay. Now, we have a second proclamation, to proclaim the second week in May as Turquoise Takeover Week, to raise awareness of lung cancer. And I think, I don't think anyone is here where we will be mailing the proclamation, but I will stand and read it. Whereas Lung Force is a national initiative led by the American Lung Association to defeat lung cancer, and whereas Lung Focus Annual Turquoise Takeover Celebration unites the nation to raise critical awareness of lung cancer, the nation's leading cancer killer; and whereas about every two and a half minutes, a person in the United States is diagnosed with lung cancer; and whereas lung cancer is the leading cause of cancer deaths for women and men; and whereas lung cancer screening saves lives; and advocacy and increased awareness will result in more high-risk individuals getting screened; and whereas public support for research funding will result in new treatments and better methods of early detection. Now therefore, I, Patty Gregory, Mayor of the city of Belleville, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the week of May 8th through the 14th, 2022, as Turquoise Takeover Week in the city of Belleville, Illinois. I encourage all residents of Belleville to learn more about lung cancer, risk factors, and early detection. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Belleville to be affixed on this day, the second day of May, 2022. Thank you very much. And we will make sure that this will be mailed to the proper people that need it. Thank you so much. Okay, we will now move on. So I'd like to have a motion to read 7G through 7N together.
Duco.
Okay, okay, that's great.
Everybody okay with it?
Yeah.
Jenny, why don't you go ahead and read? Okay? She's a better reader, because she goes really fast, faster than me. I get tongue-tied.
Motion to approve City Council Committee appointments for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Motion to approve the reappointment of Russell Scott to serve a two-year term on the Board of Fire and Police Commission. Motion to approve the reappointment of Mary Carbin and Carol Keely to serve a three-year term on the library board. Motion to approve the reappointment of Erin Connor to serve a two-year term on the cemetery board. Motion to approve the reappointment of Andy Gog, Keith Owens, Justin Dominique, Molly McKenzie, Nicole Hethenhausen, Jack LaSheen, and Linda Weisenstein to serve a one-year term on the Historic Preservation Commission. Motion to approve the reappointment of Patrick Sullivan to a two-year term on the police pension board. Motion to approve the reappointment of James Curts, Neil Skip McEwen, and Larry McLean to serve a three-year term on the planning commission. And motion to approve the reappointment of Chuck Langworth, Steve Hemmer, and appointment of Jennifer Brown and Andrea Powell to serve a four-year term on the Downtown Development and Redevelopment Commission.
Okay.
Second, Aris.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Duco.
Aye.
Aris.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dennehyman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygon.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostoff.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Motion to carry, Mayor.
Thank you. Tonight, we have no approval of minutes. We had a little glitch with, with our computer system, and lost...
We're getting it back.
We're getting it back. Thank goodness for Scott and a team of people who've worked all weekend. So I, we will have that for the next meeting. Files are being recovered, and because of an electrical thing that happened here in the city. So there will be a few things that will not be on the agenda tonight, but they will be back on May 16. 16, okay. Claims, payroll, and disbursements. I need a motion to approve payroll in the amount of $904,775.08. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Okay. Roll call.
Aris.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dennehyman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygon.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostoff.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And now oral reports from standing committees, special committees, and any other oral reports from the elected officials or staff. Okay, motion from administration. I want to read all these, 11A through 11A6, together.
Oh, we have to, we need to do the report.
Oh, oh, yes, we have the report. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I forgot to do the attorney's report. Sorry, Garrett. Okay, 10A. We have a motion to approve the city attorney's report dated April 29, 2022. A second? Oh, that's a second. Okay, discussion. Anybody? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Now, these are oral reports from standing committees, special committees, and any other oral reports from the elected officials or staff. So motions from administration, I'd like to read these, 11A1 through 11A6, together. Any questions about that? Okay. I'm going to ask Jenny again to read them.
Motion to approve a highway authority agreement for the property located 7406 West Main Street. 11A2, motion to approve an amended development agreement with Tiger Con Properties Incorporated for the remodeling of 300 East Main Street. 11A3, motion to approve an amended development agreement with Tiger Con Properties Incorporated for the remodeling of 710, 712 East D Street. 11A4, motion to approve an amended development agreement with Tiger Con Properties Incorporated for the remodeling of 500 Park Avenue. 11A5, motion to approve an amended development agreement with Tropical Breeze Cafe for the remodeling of 4901 West Main Street. 11A6, motion to enter into an agreement with the Department of the Army for design and construction assistance for the Belleville, Illinois East Creek Sewer Separation Project. Aris, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dennehyman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygon.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostoff.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Aris.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Now, a motion from Historic Preservation Committee, Commission. This is a motion to approve the annexation of 600 South Charles Street into the Old Belleville Historic District.
Aris, so moved.
Second.
Schaefer.
Discussion? Roll call.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dennehyman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygon.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostoff.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Aris.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Randall, could you make the motions for streets and grades?
Be happy to, Mayor, thank you. Motion from Streets and Grades, 11C1, move to approve the agreement with Gonzales Companies in the amount of $44,685 for survey, pavement, coring, and design of repairs to also place RIB funds. 11C2, motion to approve agreement with Oates Associates in the amount of $46,500 for preparation of plans, specifications, and estimates, PS and E, for the reconstruction of street pavement and possible V gutter to North Charles and Dewey Street, TIF 12 funds, so moved.
Ferguson.
Steele. Alderman Randall made the motion. Alderman Ferguson, second.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dennehyman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygon.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostoff.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Aris.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Okay. A motion now from ordinance and legal review, Alderman Steele. Yes, can I read them together? Mm-hmm. Okay. 11D1, I move to amend Title 11 Business Regulations, Chapter 121, Alcoholic Beverages, Section 121.04, prohibited licenses and locations. 11D2, move to amend Title 15 Land Usage, Chapter 154, Property Maintenance Code, Section 154.45, Definitions. 11D3, motion to amend Title 7 Traffic Code, Chapter 74, Parking Regulations, Section 74.02, No Parking Rules, and 74.04, Towing Vehicles. 11D4, motion to amend Title 9 General Regulations, Chapter 93, Nuisances. Section 93.082, Control of Glare, Luminaire Design Factors. 11D5, motion to amend Title 15 Land Usage, Chapter 150, Building Code, Building Regulations, Section 150.38, and HVAC Permit Table Number 1.
Second.
Discussion?
Something remind, I, I brought back on what 11D1 was about, the Chapter 121, Alcoholic Beverages.
We didn't. I don't think we voted on that yet. Right?
Yeah, you did.
Yeah, that went to, that went to ordinance and legal. That's the hundred-foot, the church, the setback from the church and the school.
Oh, yeah.
For the allowance.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Any more discussion? Roll call. Ovian.
Aye.
Dennehyman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygon.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostoff.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Aris.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Now, motion from the Zoning Board of Appeals, Jenny?
20 April 22, Blunt and Moore Holdings LLC requests for a special use permit to operate an adult-use cannabis dispensing organization located at 7300 Twin Pyramid Parkway, 07130107002, located in C2 Heavy Commercial District, applicable sections of the city code 123.005, 123.008, and 162.515, Ward 8. Zoning Board of Appeals unanimously recommended approval in the name of the applicant only, with all present members voting in the affirmative with a vote of six to zero. Aris, so moved.
Schaefer. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Dennehyman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
vote, so I was just looking for some clarification as to why it's not before the committee or the council this evening.
I'm going to let, let.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to all of you that was there the other night for the marathon we had. It was quite a, quite a long meeting. So the short answer is there needs to be an amendment to chapter one-twenty-three to accommodate the second request.
And that amendment will be going through ordinance and legal?
Yes.
Will that be on the next meeting, Jenny?
I have no idea.
We, we talked about it. That's the one item I wanted to get on there.
Okay.
We couldn't get on the special meeting this morning.
The reason why I raise the question is I understand there is a time element for these applications through the state that need to be adhered to.
That is correct. That's why there's a pressure to get them pushed through. The state gets ready to go, they get ready to go.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank both of you.
Can we discuss what one-twenty-three is about?
One-twenty-three is your adult cannabis, I mean, regulation, the distance separation. So when you look at the way the provisions are written, they address dispensaries, crop rows, cultivations, the minimum distance requirements from a dispensary to a residential zone district is four hundred feet. That would need to be reduced. Either or, you would have to look at how you measure that distance. Do you do it by as the crow flies or do you have to walk around? I think Alderman Ovian, I explained that during the meeting. So theoretically, if you go from the closest residentially zoned district and you actually walk the path to the site, it would be well over five hundred and fifty feet. If you jump through the back of the A and A beauty, the proposed A and A beauty, you get to like two hundred and seventy feet. So I guess the, the intent is to understand what the intent was of that distance separation, because if your intent is to separate the uses, you, you've got natural built buffering that really restrict, that limits the distance. So I think that's some of the discussion that will take place at that.
Mayor, may I ask, facilities shall not be located within four hundred feet of the property line of a pre-existing area zoned for residential use?
Yes.
And did, were you trying to change that number of feet?
So that goes to that, the response to that question. I've, I've done several dispensaries in both Missouri and here in Illinois. I've done cultivation centers and I addressed Wicker licenses. So there's two logics to measuring the distance separation. In the planning world, we call it as the crow flies. So I can walk from the back of that residentially zoned property line and walk right to Mayor Gregory and it's twenty-five feet. Or if I have to follow the sidewalk, I gotta walk all the way around in seventy-five, eighty feet. The point is, we try to figure out what is the intent of that. And the way the current provisions are written, it talks about that pretty much right to it. So in, in the essence of time for this particular one, as Alderman Randall talked about, they're always under the shot clock, so to speak. So we moved it forward because a special use permit pertains to one-sixty-two, which is your zoning regulations. Then it defers to meet in the supplementary regulations of chapter one-twenty-three, which is a separate ordinance in itself and not under the privy of the Zoning Board of Appeals. It's actually not eligible for a variance for those provisions, so the amendment is the only option at that point.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any more discussion? Okay. Now, communications, Jenny?
Can I read them together?
Please.
Twelve A, Memorial Day Ceremony, five-thirty, twenty twenty-two, request from Belleville Area Veterans Group to host Memorial Day Ceremony Monday, May thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, eleven a.m. to twelve p.m. Walnut Hill Cemetery. Additional city services, chairs, tents, and flag access. Twelve B, Heal From Within Mental Health Celebration, five-twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two. Request from Elated Hearts LLC to host Heal From Within Mental Health Celebration, Saturday, May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, eleven a.m. to three p.m. Huff Park. Additional city services, electric trash taters and picnic tables. Twelve C, Cinco de Mayo, five-five, twenty twenty-two, and five-six, twenty twenty-two. Request from El Gordito to host Cinco de Mayo on Thursday, May fifth, twenty twenty-two, four p.m. to ten p.m., and Friday, May sixth, twenty twenty-two, four p.m. to eleven-fifty-nine p.m. on patio and grass area with music. No city services requested. Twelve D, West Haven Estates Block Party, six-eighteen, twenty twenty-two. Request from West Haven Estates to host a block party Saturday, June eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, eleven a.m. to five p.m. Street closures intersection of Clausen and Rose Marie Drive. Additional city services, trash taters, barricades, and picnic tables. Twelve E, Toco Family Festival, ten-one, twenty twenty-two. Request from Tapestry of Community Offerings to host Toco Family Festival Saturday, October first, twenty twenty-two, three p.m. to ten p.m. Street closures West Main between Eighth and Tenth Street and use of city parking lot at Tenth and Main, twelve p.m. to twelve a.m., ten-two, twenty twenty-two. Additional services, no parking, signage, trash taters, picnic tables, and public works personnel.
Eris, so moved. Schaefer, second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor, in the interest of last month, we approved of outdoor music right against the subdivision for Silver Creek. El Gordito is even closer to the subdivision. Can we go ahead and just amend this to ten-thirty, just like we did Silver Creek?
For the, for the Saturday, or the Friday evening?
Right.
Okay.
We did ten-thirty at Silver Creek. This restaurant is even closer to the subdivision. In the name of consistency, I mean, we should amend twelve C to ten-thirty. And I apologize if we made to read that separately now, but that's my amendment.
I mean, if, if Alderwoman Eris and Alderwoman Schaefer are agreeable to the amendment with their motion.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Any discussion on what Mr. Elmore has just put forth? Okay. Hearing none? No discussion?
You can do an aye vote.
We can just do an aye or nay. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, thank you very much. We have no petitions this evening and resolutions, a motion to be read by title only on resolution thirty-four forty-one.
So moved.
Thank you.
Eris, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Jenny?
Fourteen A, resolution thirty-four forty-one, twenty twenty-two, resolution for improvement under Illinois Highway Code, also place.
Eris, so moved. Schaefer, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, roll call on that one. Yeah.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygon.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostoff.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Eris.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Present.
Dillman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you very much. We have no unfinished business and under miscellaneous and new business.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
I know that we financially, we support Art on the Square to some extent each year. My question is, do we get a breakdown on what that support goes towards? My question also is because if it's advertising, I personally, I'm not feeling like I'm seeing advertising taking place for this upcoming Art on the Square. So do we get a breakdown?
Well, we have asked for a breakdown for the upcoming show. In the past, we have had the breakdown automatically because it has gone through Illinois, I mean, Belleville Tourism. And as at this point, it has been going, unless it's been changed, and you may know that, through Illinois South Tourism, and even though we have always written grants to get the fifteen percent match, I mean, fifteen percent back, and then Illinois South gets the grant money, if we spend fifty thousand there, then they get state funding for fifty thousand. But all the ads and things have always gone through Belleville Tourism as far as approval for the city logos and different things, and also to the other major sponsors to have the logos approved and everything. So we have asked for that for this year before the show. So we are still waiting for that. Yes.
Mayor, would they be treated like any other vendor, though? That we don't pay an invoice until we get something with the documentation of what we're spending?
I would think yes. Jamie, could you answer that?
So typically each year, they send an invoice requesting the amount. I believe in the past, they've sent the breakdown of what marketing and everything they do for that cost. It was gonna be in the claims for this meeting, but obviously that didn't happen, computer issues, so it's still lingering out there with a bunch of other invoices.
So this year's invoice did not include that breakdown?
The only thing I get is an invoice for the twenty-four thousand dollar, I don't wanna call it a grant, but the, the amount that we've always.
For marketing dollars, yeah.